Welcome, everyone, that's online right now. We are now moving into the City of Daly City Regular City Council Meeting for Monday, July 26, 2021. You know, pursuant to Governor Newsom's executive order N-29-20, members of the Daly City Council and staff will participate in this meeting via teleconference. Members of the public are encouraged to watch this meeting via livestream, City Council Meeting livestream at https://bit.ly/dailycityjul26. And now, at this time, may we have roll call, please, Madam Clerk?
Mr. Buena Ventura.
Present.
Dr. Rod.
Present.
Ms. D. Giovanni.
Present.
Mr. Sylvester.
Glenn Sylvester, present.
Ms. Manalo.
Present, thank you very much. Now, moving on to if everyone can rise for the pledge of the flag, please.
Diligence to the flag. States of America. Republic, which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. And now, since we're at the approval of minutes prior to approval of the minutes of July 12, 2021, Madam Clerk, I do have some changes, and I will hand it off to Councilmember D. Giovanni. In my comments for City Council reports, I did mention youth that participated in our meeting. I'd like to acknowledge the organization that they were representing. So it is the San Mateo County Asian Pacific Islander Caucus. And slash A Papa internship program.
Noted, thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. I think my colleague, Councilmember D. Giovanni, has some changes for the minutes as well.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Yeah, I'd just like to, for the record, where it says dedicated park bench at Geller Park, I like the, to have my, or I recuse myself, given the reasons, I will send the text out to you. But obviously, for receiving campaign funds, endorsement, and for Mr. Canepa, and the use of public funds. And then, just one more, where it says on the City Council reports, City Council reported, let's see, Engine 95, and then I continued about the Social Justice Committee and various details with the questions. So I just wanted to reflect the questions in my inquiry on the restorative justice aspect of it. And I will be sending that in as well, viewing the video, as I did today, Madam Clerk, for the record.
Noted, thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Do I have a motion to approve the minutes for July 12, 2021?
Motion to approve the minutes?
I have a first, or I have a second?
Second.
I have a second from Vice Mayor. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, thank you very much.
Aye.
Thank you. Now, moving on to, let me pull. And by. One moment. So many meetings coming. Here we go. Now, moving on to the approval of the agenda, I have a motion to approve the agenda, please.
Motion to approve the agenda?
Have a first, or have a second?
Second.
Have a second, all in favor, say aye.
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 Thank you very much. Now, moving on to the consent agenda.
Madam Mayor.
Moving on to the consent agenda, I'd like to pull item number one. Is there, is there any other items to be pulled?
Yes, Madam Mayor, thank you. I'd like to pull two through five and item 11.
Just for clarification, that's not two and five. You'd like to pull two, three, four, and five.
Yes, thank you. Thank you for the clarification, and number 11.
And number 11.
Yeah, thank you very much.
With the exception of item number one, two, three, four, five, and 11, do I have a motion to approve the other items?
Motion to approve the other items?
I have a motion to approve the other items, I have a second. I'll second it, all in favor, say aye.
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 Thank you, thank you very much. Now, moving on to our resolutions, adopting the resolution of observing Juneteenth as a national Independence Day as a daily city holiday for the City of Daly City. I pulled this item because I want to thank staff for working expeditiously on this and ensuring that we're able to observe Juneteenth as soon as we can and work diligently with our labor partners and unions to approve this. I think, you know, this is something that has been done nationally, but on the local level, being able to recognize the history of the United States and reckoning with what has happened in the past and being able to ensure that, as we move forward, you know, we continue to remember America's history and that social justice and equity continues to be within the forefront and framework of the work we do. So, thank you very much. And thank you, Mr. Call, for, I have no questions, thank you for your hard work on this, thank you. So, I move to approve, oh, do you have, oh, okay, hold on one moment. Do you have a comment on this item?
Yes, I do, Madam Mayor. Yes, I just want to say.
Vice Mayor, go ahead, Councilmember D. Giovanni.
Oh, thank you.
I just want to, I just want to concur with the mayor. You know, when we look at a lot of the protests that are happening today, they're all extensions of this legacy of racism and slavery. And, you know, to not just remember the holiday as a, as a day of vacation, but as a day of learning and understanding and connecting everything that's happening with Black Lives Matter in relationship to the legacies of white supremacy and the histories that are embedded in this, in this country. And I just want to thank the mayor for, and the staff for making this possible.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Councilmember D. Giovanni.
Yeah, um, not just recognizing it, but also that when people would think about like the, what it doesn't mean, right? So when we not just celebrate that day next year, and we make sure that, like you said, our labor unions and our workers and staffers are, actually, this became an official holiday. Way overdue, way overdue. So, but it's done. So now, we recognize it, and we continue to, every time we celebrate it, we want to make, celebrate the people and the struggles, but I want to make sure that our, as employees, you guys didn't move very fast, Natalie. And I'm sure that all the workers and staffers and our labor unions really appreciate that you and Shauna moving quickly. So I really want to acknowledge that, because everyone else was really like, where's, you know, when is it going to happen, when is it going to happen? It happened, and thanks to all of you, you did it very quickly. Thank you very much. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you for that. I don't see any other raised hands on this topic. So, at this point, I move to approve this, do I have a second?
Second.
May we have roll call, please? Madam Clerk.
It's okay. This, Mr. Buena Ventura.
Aye.
Dr. Rod.
Aye.
Ms. D. Giovanni.
Aye.
Mr. Sylvester.
Glenn Sylvester, aye.
Ms. Manalo.
Aye, thank you very much. Thank you, everyone. Moving on to item number two, reappointing the Daly City Bicycle Pedestrian Advisory Committee members. And we have Director Chu, or is it Ms. Chan?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor, I'll do the presentation for this item. This item is the reappointment for the Daly City Bicycle Pedestrian Advisory Committee members. The Daly City B-PAP Committee, they meet quarterly to review proposals for pedestrian and bikeway improvement projects. They also look at project funding applications and provide input on existing roadway and bikeway conditions that impact pedestrians and cycling activities in Daly City. The members are appointed to a renewable two-year term. And half the members expire on an even number year, and the other half expire on an odd number year. So, at this time, we have three committee members, Clayton Koo, Melinda Hugh, and Wiser Masano, that have their terms expired, and staff is recommending that they be reappointed for another two years, expiring on June 30, 2023. Clayton Koo has been a resident of Daly City for 31 years, and he has served on the Daly City B-PAP since 2013. Melinda Hugh has lived in Daly City for 12 years, and she was appointed to the B-PAP Committee in January of 2019. And lastly, Wiser Masano, he's been a resident of Daly City for 33 years, and he has served on the Daly City B-PAP since 2017. In terms of fiscal impact, there really isn't much. The only fiscal impact for the committee is the support that public work staff provides, and that funding is available and has been accounted for in the Public Work Engineering Division operating budget for the fiscal year. And in summary, staff is recommending that the City Council reappoint Clayton Koo, Melinda Hugh, and Wiser Masano for a new two-year term expiring in June 30, 2023. That concludes the presentation. Happy to answer any questions, and I'm not sure if we have some of the committee members present or not. Surely, do you know of anyone that's present?
Yeah, unfortunately, I don't see anyone here tonight.
Okay, yeah, they were made up and aware of the meeting. They, all three of them expressed a desire to be reappointed. So, thank you.
If there's no other questions at this point, okay, Councilmember D. Giovanni, you have any questions for staff?
Yeah, it's not really a question, I just want to say, the backgrounds that you provided here are pretty extraordinary. We all knew that, this is a committee, may not be a commission, I don't know whether anybody think, it's a very highly qualified committee, the backgrounds. So I want to recognize each of them and the ones that are due next 2022, because they contribute so much, and they really have a good time, and they're very consistent in their feedback, and you guys really talk about projects. And I know that you welcome everything they say, Ms. Chan and Mr. Chu, and it's a delight to have them as a committee member and to serve in this capacity, because this committee really is pretty strong with their backgrounds. I'm just really proud of each and every one of them. So, if they're not listening tonight, please convey that, and look forward to many more, and happy to reappoint. Thank you very much, Ms. Mayor, Mr. Chu, and Ms. Chan, thank you.
Thank you, Director Chu, Councilmember D. Giovanni, and Ms. Chan for that, and I want to thank all of the committee members who take their time out and volunteer really around ensuring that we have more accessibility to cyclists, pedestrians, et cetera, and making that a more, a more safer community in regards to those aspects. So with that, I move to approve item number two.
Move to approve item number two? Second?
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Roll call since we pulled it, I'm sorry, Rose, do we have the roll call since we pulled it?
No roll call is needed, Madam Mayor.
Okay. Aye, thank you very much. Now, moving on to item number three, accepting Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Assistance Grant JAG Program Grant Funds for the Drug Detection K9.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of council. This is about the 20th request for Edward J. Byrne Grants through the Daly City Police Department. In the last five or six years, we've used grant funds to pay for crime lab fees and specifically to pay for crime lab fees related to cold case homicides. Since are these funds or rollover funds, we still have remaining funds left in the grant for cold case homicide. So a request was put in to replace or to use the Edward J. Grant Burns Grant Fund to purchase a canine detection dog. One of the reasons is community outreach, now that the pandemic is easing, we hope to be able to go to community events, and the dogs are quite popular with members of the public. Also, with the rise in fentanyl cases, we wanted to have another drug detection dog, and we're seeing a lot of overdoses in the community related to fentanyl and fentanyl-cutting drugs like methamphetamine and cocaine. And hopefully, the drug detection canine dogs can make a little bit of a dent in that process. The funds will pay for both the purchase of the dog as well as the full training program, which is about five weeks long. We're open to any questions, Diane McCarthy, who wrote the staff report, is on as well.
Thank you very much, Acting Chief Gammas, for your report. And now, if there's any more comments, and thank you for writing that, Ms. McCarthy. Councilmember D. Giovanni, do you have any particular questions?
Yes, I want to say thank you for thinking about this diligently, because the cases have risen quite high, and I know that this COVID, I don't know if it's, I'm sure it's attributed to it, and maybe this, this canine can help save lives. And I know, Ms. McCarthy, and again, as you guys really in RPD really care about everyone in our community and being proactive and thinking outside the box, of how can we help our community, those that are very vulnerable, that are addicted to these horrible, horrible drugs and losing family members. So I want to thank you, and there's, you guys are tremendous, look forward to the canine being out with the community, because like you said, they really look forward to seeing a lot, especially the children. So thank you very much, and I appreciate all, both of you and RPD does for our community. Truly appreciate it. Thank you very much for all you do. Thank you. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. I think it's great that you continue to get these grants year in and year out. I think that's something that is a testament to you both, and being able to find resources is, you know, out there to be able to do this. So I think that, I want to say thank you to both on that.
Thank you.
Okay, at this point, I move to accept the Edward Bryan Memorial Justice Assistance Grant Program Grant Funds for the Drug Detection K9, do I have a second?
Second.
I mean, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, thank you very much. Now, moving on to item number four, accepting and appropriating grant from the Daly City Public Associates for the library summer learning programs.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the City Council. Very happy to bring to you again another generous grant from the Daly City Public Library Associates. We have here this evening the wonderful, fabulous Chair of, current Chair of the Board of the Daly City Public Library Associates, Brian Dossi. Like to thank him in person, but the whole of Daly City Public Library Associates and their, and their members. We recently received a grant specifically to support the summer learning program, so, which is currently underway, and if anyone has not signed up that are interested, you can drop by any of the libraries and get a free book. People who complete the program also are entered in $1,000 scholarship. I'm happy to answer any questions or provide any additional information, or I don't know if Mr. Dossi wants to add anything.
Thank you, Chela, yes, Madam Mayor, and members of council, if I may, just really quickly, is that okay? Tonight, I'm here to present on behalf of the Daly City Public Libraries Associates. We're here to present a grant for $3,500 to, as Chela said, the Daly City Public Libraries Summer Learning Program. The grant was awarded to the DCPLA from the Danford Fisher Handing Foundation. And as you know, and as Chela just stated, the annual summer learning program supports families in reading, exploring, and learning over the summer. And the mission of the program is to help the kids beat the summer slide, which you know is the loss in academic achievement made during the school year. Library staff distributes free books, provides a series of fun interactive activities, and gives out prizes to keep participants engaged. And then, the last thing I'd like to just mention tonight, we are still actively conducting our membership drive. So if you have not renewed your membership, or if you'd like to become a member of the DCPLA, I encourage you to please visit our website at dcpl.org. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much, Mr. Dawson, thank you so much, Chela, for all your work on this. I know that Councilmember D. Giovanni, I think, I don't know if she has any questions in regards to this, but thank you all so much for your hard work and your constant support to our libraries. So, Councilmember D.
Yeah, I'll just make it short, the reason I pulled this, you know, people are thinking this is a lot of items. This is so important. Yeshel, we see you every week now, the DCPLA, it's great. We don't get to see enough, but when you come, and not just because you give the grants, but it's been pretty much, pretty steady weekly. So I think it's important that the people know that this is happening in our community, and that you guys are out there receiving the money, but making sure the money is given directly to our libraries and the needs, especially during our summer reading, like you said, this is where they lose, children really lose their words, per se, especially the little ones. So, excited, thank everyone there, DCPLA, and Chela for everyone at the library. It was such a delight, and looking forward to move forward, and so happy to see another one on our agenda. So thank you, Mayor, and thank you, everyone, this is exciting news.
Thank you very much. Are there any other comments from my colleagues in regards to item number four? Seeing no hands raised, I move to approve item number four, and want to say thank you very much again for all the continued support. This helps our families and seniors, well, our families and youth, but all the other grants that you provided also help our seniors and families as well. So, you guys, as mentioned, I will say probably, it was Councilmember Buena Ventura that says you guys are the gift that keeps on giving, and it is continuous. So thank you so much for all your support. So do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, thank you very much. And all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, thank you very much. Moving on to item number five, extending suspension of overdue fines for library materials.
Good evening again. So, at the beginning of the pandemic, the library undertook emergency action to suspend overdue fines. This was done in concert with all the other members of the Peninsula Library System. As our community begins to recover from pandemic and the associated economic disruption, the library continues to strive to support the school readiness, the life of learning, and the information needs of our community. And we find that library accounts blocked by outstanding fines can provide an unfortunate and unnecessary barrier to services, especially for our lower-income residents who need libraries the most. In extending overdue fine forgiveness, the library will ensure that access to materials and services is available without barriers during this critical time. And in so doing, we would be in great company, as the other members of the Peninsula Library System will also not be charging fines at this time. The fiscal impact is pretty small, but the potential human impact is great. I'd be happy to answer any questions or provide any additional information.
Thank you so much, Ms. Anderson, are there any questions?
No, just that.
Okay, seeing no other questions or comments from my colleagues. And thank you for your presentation on that, and I think that just shows a testament around the library staff and everyone just being mindful of how to support our community members. And even though such a small amount can go very far, right? And if everyone is just trying to survive, that's one less thing that they have to worry about. So thank you for that. So, I move to extending the suspension of overdue fines for library materials.
Second.
Okay, thank you very much, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, thank you very much. And now, we're moving to item number 11, authorizing the city manager to enter an agreement with the County of San Mateo for the second course meal program. And it was, it looks like.
I can take this one, Mayor.
Okay.
And we also have Denise Brown, our Recreation Division Manager here tonight, if there's any specifics that come up in the questions. But during the pandemic, we all know about the Great Plates Delivered Program that served meals to older adults who are unable to obtain or prepare meals on their own while sheltering in place. They were provided three meals a day, delivered to their homes from local restaurants. And in Daly City, we actually received the highest investment amount. It was over nineteen and a half million dollars invested in local restaurants. There were over 1,300 older adults served in the program, and close to 900,000 meals were provided. And that program ended on July 9th of this year. So through the new second course program, the County of San Mateo is working with the city's Active Adult and Senior Services Unit to provide a continuity of service for delivered meals. And our Active Adult Senior Services Unit has managed the county's Congregate Nutrition Program Grant for senior meals and nutrition education for over 20 years. And during the pandemic, the unit transitioned to serving older adults through the grab and go, which were pickup meals and home-delivered meal programs. So they're really uniquely positioned to take on this new second course program. The contract is for 19,500 meals through the end of June next year. And homebound older adults will receive meals, nutrition education, and nutrition risk screenings. Each meal will provide one-third of the dietary reference intakes and comply with the most current dietary guidelines for Americans. The total amount of the contract is $292,500. So if there's any questions, please let us know.
Thank you for that clarification, Councilmember D. Giovanni.
Yeah, I just want to say that. Ms. Brown, I want to say that, you know, that you guys have talked directly, and I'm sure, remember, I bothered Stephen when I've texted him as well, to try to get the names out, and Ann Cooney as well has done a great job, Ms. Mulby, giving the phone numbers out. You guys get the food to them, and one in particular, I might as well tell you, is Mommy Lita. If you're watching, she wanted to give a big thank you at one time. She said she knows that she can't come in person, or Ms. Palmer, I know you remember Ms. Palmer, and it's much appreciated, and not only did they do that, they culminated to make sure that they had assessed if they needed any other needs. they culminated to make sure that they had assessed if they needed any other needs, and that you didn't have to do that, but you did. So I thank you from the bottom of my heart and for the, for all our seniors that benefit from this. And now we know that they need it. We know it's much needed in our community. So thank you very much. That's all. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you so much to all the staff that has been working on this program, and it's wonderful to see the continuity of this to reach our most vulnerable and our older adults in our community. So thank you, Denise. Thank you, Anne Cooney, Ms. Maltby, and know your passion for older adults and being able to reach them as well. And so, and thank you for that comprehensive overlook, Stephen. So with that, I move to approve authorizing the city manager to enter into agreement with the County of San Mateo for the second course meal program. Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Thank you very much. All right, it looks like we have now gone through the consent agenda, all those items, and now we'll be moving on to public hearing. So our public hearings this evening, item number thirteen, the introduction of the ordinance amending sections title fifteen of the Daily City Municipal Code regarding building and construction permit time limitations. And we have Mr. Sagala, that will be presenting to us this evening.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This is a proposal to change expiration limitations on building permits. Requests for building permits are essentially composed of two stages. One, the building permit application stage, where the applicant submits for plan review. And two, permit issuing stage, where the applicant constructs and final project. In the wake of the COVID-19 global pandemic, new challenges have arisen, making it difficult for permities to comply with current Daly City Municipal Code amendments relating to permit and application expiration dates. In March of 2020, Governor Gavin Newsom announced a Shelter at Home order effectively prohibiting nonessential construction. Continued shelter in place orders coupled with California's COVID-19 tier system has caused additional construction delays at no fault of the permittee. The Building Division has received numerous requests for permit extensions in plan review and permit issuance stages. To address this, staff has proposed to update and modify the current code language to allow for increased time limits on permits and permit applications. In addition to this, staff has also included necessary modifications to encapsulate AB 292913 with increases limiting on permits. This ordinance would include an additional three hundred and sixty day extension, providing leniency relating to COVID-19 pandemic. In addition, staff has removed the requirements to final projects within three hundred and sixty days. Projects under code enforcement will remain the same. For permit applications, you are given a hundred and eighty days to achieve plan approval and permit issuance. An additional two hundred and eighty day maximum extensions are permitted for requests prior to expiration. Requests are made to the building official demonstrating that circumstances beyond the control of the applicant and relating to the project have prevented action from being taken. Requests after expiration are required to resubmit at the discretion of the building official. For building permits, applicants are given one year to commence work on their permit. An extension of a hundred and eighty days is given to projects that successfully pass a required inspection, i.e. footing foundation, concrete slab, underfloor, framing, lath or gypsum board, fire resistance penetration, energy efficiency, and any required special inspection. A total of three extension requests are permitted and follow the same rules as permit application extension requests. Requests made after expiration are required to reactivate and resubmit drawings at the discretion of the building official. For building maintenance permits, applicants are given a hundred and eighty days to complete project, and extensions are granted following the same rules as building permits and permit application. This ends my presentation, and I'm open to any questions.
Thank you so much, Mr. Sagala. Prior to us moving on, Attorney Zimmerman, I do have a question as my role as city council in regards to this item. I want to know if I have to recuse myself in regards to this item, given I have a current construction permit that is with the city. I'd like to know if this is something I need to recuse myself on.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. In regards to this being updates as it pertains to just the building codes, I don't see a conflict of interest that would require you to have to recuse yourself.
Okay, thank you very much. Just want to make sure. Appreciate it. Councilmember Sylvester.
Thank you so much, Madam Mayor. Question on the resubmitting of plans. Is this, is there a cost involved in resubmitting plans?
That's a good question. Yeah, if you go into the fourth cycle, you are required to pay additional plan reviews, plan review fees. And that just pretty much covers the staff time to complete your review.
Thank you so much for that. I don't have a problem with the plan review, as I believe in cost recovery. However, what if the, the permity advises that there are no changes? Do they still have to pay a plan review fee?
Well, typically, we allot three cycles, and in those three cycles, the design professional is working with our permit, our plan review staff. And if that, if they do not receive the approval within the three cycles, it oftentimes means that the design professional requires an additional assistance and help to get it to become an approved set of plans. And because it requires that additional time and assistance, and that is why the additional fees are enforced at the fourth cycle.
Thank you, Mr. Sagala, for that clarification. I think the city's being very reasonable, especially, as you said, at the fourth cycle. So obviously, some time has been taken by plan review three times prior. So I think that's very reasonable. Thank you so much for the clarification.
Thank you. Councilmember Dijivani, is your hand up for this item?
Yes. Thank you, Mayor. First of all, thank you for the report and being so thoughtful to the residents. I know it's been very stressful on both ends for all of you as well, trying to get things in for the people in rush because they're under a lot of pressure too, and the way to communicate has been different, different languages going back and forth with paperwork. So it's been quite an undertaking, and I have had reports of a retired teacher who had great success, and you guys were very efficient, and I just wanted to give you a lot of credit for that. Sometimes you don't get to hear that when you're back there with all those roles of everything, you and Michael and Tatum and everyone. But this is a good idea, and I'm glad that we're doing this for the people. It's going to take a while to, for people, and you recognize that. And maybe it will cost them not as much money, because maybe they're rushing too much. Like you said, you used to give four cycles, and they may be just rushing to get something done and get it in, and then they have to go back and they have to do it again, even though they know they might have to. So, because they just don't want to be late. So well thought out. Please thank your staff. And I'm really, really grateful that we can do something to relieve a little stress off of people that are trying to do the right thing. Thank you very much. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Is there any other comments or questions before we move to open and, and open the hearing for our public? Seeing no hands raised at this time. So motion to open the public hearing.
Motion to open public hearing.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, first and second. At this time, I'll hand it over to Ms. Lealani to see if there's any, any, anyone in the public that'd like to speak on this item.
For those members of the public who wish to comment on item number thirteen, please click the raise hand feature to speak on this agenda item. For those joining by phone, press star nine to raise your hand. No raise hands, Mayor.
Thank you very much, Ms. Ramos. Do you have a motion to close?
Motion to close.
Have a first, have a second?
Second.
Thank you very much, Vice Mayor. And now moving on to, well, all in favor, aye.
Aye.
Now moving on to the motion for the city attorney to read by title only, only Attorney Zimmerman, please.
Is there a motion, Madam Mayor?
Oh, well, okay, we have a first by Councilmember Vada Ventura. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Vice Mayor. And may you, motion, or city attorney, may you read by title only, please?
Okay, thank you, Madam Mayor. This is an ordinance of the city of Daly City amending sections title fifteen of the Daly City Municipal Code regarding building and construction regarding permit time limits. The council will entertain any council member to introduce the ordinance.
Thank you very much. Since Councilmember Vada Ventura, you motioned it earlier. Would you like to be the council member that introduces the ordinance?
Yes, Your Honor, thank you.
Thank you very much. I think we're done with item number thirteen. Thank you, Mr. Sagala. Thank you, Rose, and thank you, everyone in regards to item number thirteen and all your work and insight around this for the community members out there. So thank you very much. And now moving on to item number fourteen, introduction of the ordinance repealing and replacing chapter eight point six four regulating the use of disposable food service ware by food facilities. And we have Ms. Lealani Ramos to present. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and council members. This evening, I will be providing an overview of a county-led initiative aimed at reducing the use of plastic disposable food service ware in Daly City. Let's begin with defining disposable food service ware. Disposable food service ware refers to one-time-use items associated with food, such as bowls, plates, clamshells, and other to-go boxes, utensils, cups, and their related accessories, including straws, napkins, sauce containers, and toothpicks, all of which are often made of plastics. The County of San Mateo and its cities have been leaders in sustainability initiatives for over a decade, and addressing the challenge of disposable food service ware is not new. In 2011, the county led an initiative to prohibit food vendors from using polystyrene-based disposable food service ware, such as styrofoam. The Daly City Council voted unanimously to join that effort in 2012. The county also led the county-wide reusable bag ordinance, essentially prohibiting the provision of single-use plastic bags in retail establishments, which again, the Daly City Council adopted unanimously shortly thereafter in late 2012. Through a regional collaborative approach, these efforts help combat negative environmental impacts as polystyrene and plastic bags often ended up as litter in our streets and polluted our waterways. This pollution continues to have lasting impacts on our environment, wildlife, and human health. In current day, petroleum-based plastic has replaced polystyrene, and plastic is now typically used in food facilities as disposable food service ware. Plastic foodware has become a pervasive pollutant, not just in our community, but across the world. Since 2019, the County of San Mateo's Office of Sustainability has been leading a new regional initiative to expand the prohibition on disposable food service ware beyond polystyrene to include more single-use plastics. The county is currently working with interested cities on solutions to the plastic waste challenge because it will be valuable to have a policy that is uniform and consistent across the entire county. The county is so invested in this effort that it will lead the education and enforcement for those cities that adopt the county's model ordinance. Recent Bay Area litter studies show that sixty-seven percent of street litter comes from single-use food and beverage packaging. While disposable food service ware is convenient to customers, plastic disposables have lasting impacts on the environment. Plastic disposable foodware is often used just for a few minutes before becoming waste that lasts hundreds of years, breaking down into very small pieces called microplastics that are now being found in the food that we eat, the air that we breathe, and even in us, in our bodies. Microplastics also absorb other pollutants found in our waterways, increasing their toxicity. After being discarded after just a single use, these plastic foodware items become highly problematic pollution that lasts many generations. After decades of research, public outreach, media coverage, and recent information sharing on social media, the problem of plastic pollution is now well-known, and public support for sustainable alternatives is at an all-time high. Cities and countries around the world are taking bold action, and so are private businesses. In addition to the environmental impact plastics have on the natural environment, more recent instability in the international plastic recycling market has led most waste haulers throughout the Bay Area and the state to treat certain types of plastics, numbers three through seven, as contamination. These types of plastics are now landfill as recycling markets in China have declined. While the global recycling industry remains in a tailspin, jurisdictions must find ways to address these issues locally. Waste haulers are working with local governments, the state, and other partners to create long-term sustainable plans for plastic waste. As a way to address this issue locally, staff is recommending to join the county-led initiative to reduce single-use plastics and other foodware wastes. The objectives of the ordinance are threefold. First, reduce waste that's both generated and sent to the landfill by, one, eliminating the unnecessary distribution and use of disposable food service ware that is not reusable or compostable, and two, reducing waste at its source. Second, improve the health and safety of Daly City residents and the greater San Mateo community by eliminating disposable food service ware that is harmful. Third, help the city meet its municipal regional stormwater permit requirement. By July 2022, the city is required by the state to ensure that trash and litter, which are largely made up of disposable foodware, are not ending up in our stormwater. This ordinance will be an important tool for the city to keep harmful materials out of our natural environment. If passed, this ordinance will appeal chapter eight point six four of the Daly City Municipal Code, which currently prohibits the use of polystyrene disposable foodware, and replace it with this expanded ordinance. The proposed ordinance would require food facilities such as restaurants, mobile food trucks, temporary food facilities found at street fairs and festivals, farmers' markets, catering operations, private schools, and any other entity that provides prepared food for public consumption to provide the following disposable food service ware made from nonplastic, compostable, natural fiber-based materials, such as paper, sugarcane, wheat stalk, bamboo, wood, and hay. There are four accessory items, which are straws, stirrers, utensils, and toothpicks, as well as the packaging that these individual items are wrapped in, if any, and larger foodware, including plates, bowls, cups, food trays, clamshells, boxes, deli, and other containers. These items may be lined with but not made of entirely of compostable plastic. Additionally, these items shall be certified by the Biodegradable Products Institute, BPI, or an approved third party. For all other disposable food service ware not listed here, items accepted by the food facility's local recycling or composting program shall be used. While a significant part of the ordinance focuses on changing the type of item that is used, it's important for jurisdictions to keep exploring opportunities to reduce waste generation at its source. With that in mind, the proposed ordinance includes requirements that impact how accessories are distributed by food facilities, since accessories make up a large portion of litter that end up on our streets and in our waterways, bay, ocean, and beaches. Accessories shall be distributed only when they are needed by the consumer, specifically only when requested by the consumer, when the consumer accepts it as an offer by the food facility or at a self-serve station or dispenser. Accessories shall be distributed unbundled as separate individual units. Takeout food delivery services that utilize digital ordering platforms shall provide clear options for customers to affirmatively request accessories. The proposed ordinance does provide exemptions for the following: prepackaged food, polystyrene coolers and chests, disposable food service ware made from aluminum, disposable plastic straws may be provided upon request to consumers with medical needs. Healthcare facilities may distribute disposable plastic straws without a request from the patient. Drive-through areas of food facilities may distribute straws and cup sleeves without a request from the customer, and if no reasonably feasible disposable food service ware alternative exists. Compliant disposable food service ware typically costs more than its plastic counterparts, ranging from one cent to twenty-seven cents more per item, depending on type, size, and material selected. It's important to note that the cost of these items have come down significantly over the past couple of years, since more vendors are making the switch to more environmentally-friendly foodware. Costs are anticipated to continue to decrease as manufacturers increase. These small-cost differences between petroleum-based plastics and fiber-based compostable food service ware are minimal when compared to the cost of plastic pollution to the environment, wildlife, and our own health. Those costs to society are not accounted for with the use of plastics, but we all pay the price. Furthermore, compostable foodware can be recycled in an organics collection bin, and organics recycling costs less compared to garbage disposal and landfills through a public services, the city's franchise waste hauler. City staff recommend going beyond the county's proposed model ordinance to include a reusable food service ware requirement wherever practicable for food facilities. Reusable foodware reduces waste because it is not thrown in the trash just after one use, and it reduces litter from single-use packaging. Staff believes taking this additional step to reduce waste at its source will yield a greater long-term benefit for both the environment and our food facilities. Approximately two hundred and sixty-seven food facilities in Daly City will be impacted by this ordinance. A study of two hundred and eleven Daly City restaurants conducted by a local advocacy organization, Reusable San Mateo County, determined that all full-service restaurants and most fast casual restaurants utilize reusables for dine-in, while all cafes, bakeries, and fast-food restaurants utilize disposable foodware for both dine-in and takeout. Further education and outreach efforts will be provided to help these food facilities transition to sustainable alternatives should the city council adopt this ordinance. The county's Food Ware Aware Team will take the lead on educating food facilities about the new requirements related to transitioning from plastic disposable food service ware to natural-fiber-based disposable food service ware and reusable food service ware as well. Enforcement is not intended to be punitive. The Office of Sustainability will take every opportunity to provide further education and assistance to successfully transition food facilities to meet the new requirements. Similarly, the city will assist in educating food facilities to transition to reusable food service ware, wherever practicable, and city staff will use the same approach for enforcement. The county has been working diligently to prepare and gather extensive resources for food facilities. The county's Office of Sustainability will maintain a list of approved compliant food service ware and has developed multilingual outreach and education materials that will also be made available on the city's dedicated webpage, dalycity.org/disposablefoodware. Staff will partner with the county's Office of Sustainability and Rethink Disposables, a nonprofit group funded by the county, to provide direct technical assistance to food facilities. Financial incentives for compliant disposable foodware for underserved food facilities, which specifically include food facilities located in San Mateo County whose owners live in zip codes nine four oh one four and nine four oh one five, are available from the Office of Sustainability. Financial incentives are also available for compliant reusable foodware for all food facilities. A food facility may receive up to three hundred dollars. Funding is limited and will be awarded on a first-come, first-served basis. Staff has been leading education efforts since fall two thousand and nineteen on this initiative with targeted outreach to food facilities, survey opportunities, and live informational sessions, to name a few. The response from food facilities is generally supportive of the changes, although businesses did express concerns about how soon the ordinance would take effect, as well as the additional cost to switch from plastic to fiber-based and/or reusables. On June ten, two thousand and twenty-one, staff presented on this topic to the Small Business Commission to invite their feedback as it relates to our business community. The commission overall supported the county's proposed model ordinance and were appreciative of city staff's recommendation to postpone the effective date six months beyond the county's effective date. They emphasized the need to be sensitive to the recovery from the pandemic and that providing outreach, education, and support is important to achieving success with the implementation of the proposed ordinance. The commission recommended looking into additional financial incentives beyond what the county is offering to provide more support to local food facilities. Since the county's adoption of the model ordinance on February twenty-fifth, two thousand and twenty, eight neighboring jurisdictions have since adopted a disposable food service ware ordinance. Four other jurisdictions are also bringing the ordinance to their councils for consideration in the next several months. The county's original operation and enforcement date was set for March twenty-fifth, two thousand and twenty-one. However, the Board of Supervisors postponed this date by one year due to the impact COVID-nineteen had on our restaurants and other food facilities. Since the city understands that many in our business community are still recovering from the pandemic, staff will be recommending to postpone the effective date of the city's ordinance beyond the County of San Mateo's March twenty-fifth, two thousand and twenty-two effective date to October first, two thousand and twenty-two, to allow for an additional six months for food facilities to prepare and transition. Staff believes this is a good middle ground in terms of understanding what the restaurants are going through right now, while not completely compromising the city's progress toward tackling plastic pollution. The council can also revisit the ordinance at a later time and decide to push out the start date even further if conditions have not improved for our restaurants and food facilities. The county will still lead education and enforcement efforts despite the postponed effective date. Enforcement will be primarily on a complaint basis. Additionally, the city can explore coordinating with the county's Office of Sustainability to administer additional grant funding to businesses when county funding is exhausted. Let's join the county in taking this next step to reduce our carbon footprint, reduce the amount of waste sent to landfills, and protect our environment and our health. Staff is available to answer any questions, and also joining us tonight is Unsu Lin from the county's Office of Sustainability to help answer questions as well.
Thank you very much, Leilani, Ms. Ramos, for that elaborate presentation in regards to this ordinance and the disposable food service ware, and I think you've made some really important points around finding ways for us to create a more sustainable just environment for the future. And I know that, I mean, there's been extensive kind of research on this and understanding that we do see a lot of the pollutants go into our waterways, and we are so close to the ocean, you know, we're a city right by Pacific Ocean, and and so, you know, being able to see if there's any avenues to create more sustain sustainability within our city is huge. So I just want to say thank you for your hard work and your collaboration with others in regards to this. I see hands up from my colleagues. Councilmember Sylvester, then Councilmember De Giovanni.
Thank you, Mayor. Leilani, I have a couple of questions for you. Well, first of all, my comment on this is I completely support it. I actually like to eat off of dishes rather than go, go containers, and I think it's much more cheaper and less expensive to use actual dishes and spoons and forks. Now, with that being said, I do have a couple of questions. Out of the two hundred and eleven restaurants surveyed in Daly City, how many of them offer eat-in capabilities?
We can actually go to that slide.
Oh, there we go. Okay, so fifty-nine fast casual and full service. Okay, okay, good. Thank you so much. So, if you can keep that slide up. In and out utilize this paper. Is that okay for go-to-go items?
Paper is a natural-fiber-based material, so that would be compostable.
Okay, McDonald's utilize like these styrofoam containers, or maybe it's not styrofoam, but they, they look like paper. Do they qualify?
The styrofoam has been banned since two thousand and twelve, so I would imagine maybe it's not styrofoam. It could be a compostable plastic that they use, and if that's the case, this ordinance is prohibiting all plastic, whether it's recyclable or compostable. And the reason is that when folks are sorting them in the containers, if they end up in the wrong container, let's say a compostable plastic is actually put in the recycling container, it gets filtered out and is considered contamination, and so it ends up in the landfill instead of where it should have been, which was in our green bin or compost container.
So what kind of outreach is going to be done to address this with McDonald's?
The corporate, the corporations are a little bit harder, although the county has already had experience with the other cities that have passed this ordinance. So they do have to reach out to the corporate offices and then from there kind of work towards solutions, so it is a bit of a longer process than working with directly a small business, for instance, that isn't franchised or with a corporation.
Thank you. You also made mention for a third-party approval of the use of various items. This third-party approval, how soon will this come to fruition or onboard so that folks can have a resource to contact this third party?
So that third-party approval was relating to the types of plastics that would be considered approved through the ordinance. For instance, if you're getting a bowl of soup in a paper container, it would need to be lined with a certified plastic so that it wouldn't spill or break and harm the consumer. Currently, BPI is a known third party, but it's also open that if other third-party vendors are certified, that those would be options as well. The products have been researched extensively with the county and Rethink Disposables. They have a huge list on their website, which we've linked on our dedicated webpage as well. So food vendors can go to those resources that have already been established, see the products that are certified through API or any other third-party vendor. And there are also coupon codes and such associated on those lists, so that when they're purchasing those materials, they can utilize those discounts as well.
Thank you. I'm concerned, and I concur with the Small Business Commission. I believe three hundred dollars is not enough for someone to convert over. And basically, what I'm looking at is those folks who cook at home and provide meals to the public. And I feel that you did say that we can push this out to October of two thousand and twenty-two, and we can even push it out further. I would like to make sure that we do have the adequate communications, social media pamphlets, because, you know, because of the pandemic, folks have reverted to cooking from home to make ends meet. And I'd hate to see them really be subject, in other words, this is a nail in the coffin for them, and you can't do it anymore. So I would like to see more outreach to our community as we move forward with this, but that is a main concern. I think we ought to set up more of a financial incentive for those who cook from home and provide food to the public. So those are all the questions I have, and I thank you so much. Just my thoughts. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Now, Councilmember De Giovanni.
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate it. Thank, thank you. Thank you, Leilani. Great presentation. Long time, two thousand and twelve, as you know, was when the council then did the ordinance on the starphone. And at that time, I remember they weren't going to do the polystyrene coolers at the time. So I would like to entertain and ask my council if we can add to, if they so choose to, because I think that, I know for myself and maybe my colleagues, that these polystyrene coolers that are broken up into pieces end up on the beaches and damages a lot of our mammals, sea mammals, and, and not very healthy for the birds. And if they crumble as well. So I didn't know if we would, if anyone would be supportive of it. I would like to add the polystyrene coolers and chests to, to this ordinance. And maybe, I'm not sure if they're used for medical conditions or careers, maybe I don't know, make an exception for that part. And then, regards to the monies, I have to concur with the three hundred dollars doesn't seem enough. But do we have any way that these three hundred dollars, do they have to qualify? I mean, some people have, you know, these small businesses have suffered and quite a lot. And as Councilmember Sylvester alluded to, that now, since the county has approved, and hopefully we will too, an ordinance that we can allow people to cook at home legally, so that they can make ends meet for their rent, for their families, that we can also make sure there's more money there so they can transition. And if there's an end date, I see October first, two thousand and twenty-two, and it was well thought out. But if there is an extension of any kind, that would be great for, because I know it's going to be heavy-duty outreach, a lot of outreach on, on your part, and as well as the staff and whoever the partners are involved. And I also, there's these cups, I'm sure you've seen them, probably you and Steven and everyone, and I don't want to call out any particular business, but on the outside, they appear to be, you know, disposable, biodegradable. But on the inside, the lining is like waxy or what have you. There's a few people, a few restaurants in our city that uses them, and they're not, you know, I don't know how we can get rid of them, because you cannot do anything, they're not biodegradable. But on the outside, for some reason, it says it. I don't get it. So I can tell you offline who's using it, because I don't want to, like, out of a business or, or, you know, it's a huge business, but still. But it's, it's not healthy for our environment. But if anyone would like to entertain adding the polystyrene coolers, because at the time in two thousand and twelve, I think that when Sal Torres was on the, I think he took the lead in this, he was going to add at some point polystyrene coolers, and that the other members of the council, most of them agreed that that would be a future endeavor. And could you know, if you have any stats on the polystyrene coolers?
I will invite the county to see if she has any additional.
Oh, I'm sorry, she's here. Yeah, she probably does. Hello?
Hi, everybody.
Hi, thank you for being here.
Thank you, thank you, everybody, for having me tonight. In terms of the status of the polystyrene coolers, I do not have a status. And I don't, and the reason I don't have a status is because I don't think it has changed since the polystyrene ban was adopted.
Right, on, on here in Daly City, but I would like to get rid, those coolers, they crumble, as you know, right? And they're not really good for the environment at all. Would you have any more information on that?
At this current time, no, because we don't really, we exempt the disposable, within our ordinance, it really touches upon disposable food ware, and we don't, we don't consider polystyrene coolers as part of the main items that we're targeting at this point, because food isn't necessarily served on polystyrene coolers.
But they do, they do carry it out at picnics and stuff. Carry food in it, as a container.
Right, well, if this is something that the city would like to explore, this would, I mean, the city definitely can.
Because it's on the list, that's why I was wondering.
Right, but I do want to bring, make it clear that if the city council does decide to explore and actually adopt a more aggressive provision banning polystyrene coolers, that is great. But it will be up to the city staff to conduct the education and outreach around that specific provision. And Leilani touched upon this during her presentation. For any provisions that go, what we call go beyond the county ordinance, for any provisions that are more aggressive, that is required, that that adds more requirements to the existing county ordinance, then the city, it's the responsibility of the city staff to conduct education and outreach. So I just, I do want to put that on the table for you to all consider as part of your decision-making process.
Okay, so like if we adopt this now and further down the road, we decide we want to do something on our own to strengthen it, perhaps with some environmental people or some health people, then we have to do that on our own, which is fine, make it stronger, but we have to do that at a different time.
That really depends, the timing depends on, it's up to That really depends, the timing depends on, it's up to you all, the city council members about the timing.
Okay, okay, thank you for that. Appreciate it. So thank you for the clarification of like, we wouldn't get the county's help in education at this time. Okay, thank you very much. I appreciate, thank you for being here. And thank you, Ms. Ramos. And the cost, right? Thank you for including the, that we're going to help the businesses, small businesses. And thank you to the Small Business Commission for thinking about that.
And Councilwoman D. Giovanni, may I answer one more question that you had?
Sure.
Around the lining. So in our ordinance, we do allow fiber-based items to be lined with what we call compostable plastic, because the lining within some of these items, they will basically break apart when you put, for instance, hot beverages or soup in them. So they be lined for safety reasons, but what we do have in our ordinance is they can be lined with compostable plastic, but the compostable plastic has to be certified by that third party.
Oh, okay.
Biodegradable Products Institute, to ensure that they actually really do break down into compost in the industrial composting facility.
Thank you for that clarification, because I'm sure you're aware that there are some that don't break down. Yes, thank you. I appreciate that. Thank you very much. Thank you, Ms. Ramos, and thank you as well for the clarification. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you very much for those questions and thank you for the clarification. Are there any other questions for my colleagues at this time before we move on to opening our public hearing? I see no other hands raised, and Councilmember D. Giovanni, that's not a new question.
Yeah, sorry about that.
I'm just making sure.
Thank you very much.
Questions lingering. Okay, seeing none at this point, I entertain the motion to open public. Oh. A motion to open a public hearing.
So move it.
Second.
Okay, and at this point, may we have a Leilani, is it Leilani or will it be Steven since you're staffing this presentation?
I can do it.
Okay, you're doing the double duty. Thank you so much. If there's any other, if there's anyone in the public at this time that would like to speak on this item.
For those members of the public who wish to comment on item number 14, please click the raise hand feature to speak on this agenda item. For those joining by phone, press star nine to raise your hand. It looks like we have two hands raised. The last called speaker will be Helen Nicely. Oh, we have three hands raised. Sally, did you still want to comment? If so, we can include you. We'll go ahead and start with Alejandra and Warren.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Oh, great. I can't see my face, so I just wanted to make sure that you can hear me. My name's Alejandra Warren. I'm a sustainability consultant and I came to be in favor of the ordinance, but actually I was impressed and surprised by the wonderful work that the city staff members did. Wonderful research based on science and real facts and numbers. And that is what our city should represent, right? I am also in favor of the city staff recommendation to include a reusable footwear requirement for dine-in. I do a lot of work with restaurants, especially underrepresented communities, small family businesses. And I know that reuse is the best way to save money to these restaurants. I've been visiting restaurants in the last couple of weeks in Daly City, talking to them. I wanted to make sure that they're back in reuse because of COVID. And all restaurants are back, I would say almost 100% in reuse. That makes me think that the public is feeling safe with reuse again. They're using utensils, plates, cups, all reusables. And the reasons why restaurants are back in reuse is because they're saving money. Single-use footwear was a really expensive cost that restaurants had during COVID. And a really good way for the city to support these restaurants, especially small restaurants that are the ones that really need support, is by adding the reusable food requirement for dining. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next, we have Helen Nicely.
Hi, good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Great. Good evening, Madam Mayor and City Councilmembers. I support the ban on the use of single-use plastic disposables in the food and drink industry in Daly City. And I thank Ms. Ramos for her excellent presentation and for Alejandra for her contributions. I have led beach cleanups at Muscle Rock, and I conduct analyses of types of trash picked up in an annual count. We have found that restaurant-associated and takeout food-related plastics are the number two most frequently found trash items, with number one being cigarette butts. Banning the use of plastic packaging, plastic utensils, et cetera, will align Daly City with other San Mateo cities who've had success in this ruling. And I want to ask a question. I've been visiting a very favorite Pacifica sushi restaurant for many years, and they are still providing plastic styrofoam trash, not trash, styrofoam kind of shells, clam shells for the food we take out. And I've talked to the manager, he just says, well, that we're using up what we have, we're allowed to do that. But how does one review the, get the results from this type of ban? Does anybody know? Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. And Mayor, we have three additional hands that raised after last call speaker.
Sure, as long as it's pertaining this item, I'll allow them to speak if it's in regards to item number 14.
Okay. Matt Warren.
Yes, hi. I hope you can all hear me okay. Oh, great. My name's Matt Warren. I'm an ecologist and an environmental scientist. And I just congratulate the city of Daly City, the staff for an incredible work, you know, incredible research that they've done. And congratulate you all for taking up this issue, because it is of critical importance. The issue of plastic pollution is, it's one of the major environmental issues that we're facing today. The impacts on the envi, not only the environment, but on human health are just now coming to life in all stages of the lifecycle, life cycle of single-use plastics. And I strongly support the provision for reuse, dine-in reuse. It's really important, because everything, you know, anything that is not reusable enters into the municipal waste stream, and then it becomes an externality. So it becomes a burden on society to take care of that trash, be it, you know, transportation to the landfill and disposing of it properly, or it gets into the environment and degrades the environment, and it has, you know, profound impacts on the environment. And, you know, reuse also keeps the toxins from plastic from, you know, getting into or impacting human health. So, you know, it's an environmental issue, it's a human health issue, it's an economic issue, and reuse is a win-win-win-win on all of those aspects. So I strongly encourage the city to adapt the most aggressive policy as possible for reuse, because it just makes sense. So thanks a lot, and I hope you'll, I hope you'll consider the reuse option. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next, we have Eva Holman.
Hi, everyone. Thank you so much for taking the time to talk about this really incredible, important next step for Daly City. I, first of all, want to just say how excited I am that you're considering this. And I just want to support you as much as I can through the work I do. I'm a policy organizer for a national NGO called Upstream, and we actually work a lot on footwear policies, reuse policies, and mostly trying to get people to use reusables in place of single use. That being said, however, the accessories upon request and the ban of PFAS are so incredibly important. We're seeing similar policies all over the Bay Area. Berkeley is obviously was the kind of, one of the first one to go. Marin County is considering a similar policy with reuse for onsite dining, as well as a ban on the chemicals and accessories upon request. Napa, Cupertino, Palo Alto, Palm Springs, Culver City, it's just, it's catching on everywhere. These kinds of bans on single-use disposable plastics, as well as PFAS and accessories on request. And seeing that Daly City added on the reuse, it's just really exciting, because it follows suit with the rest of these cities that are doing the same. Just last week, Santa Rosa passed almost the same policy, which had accessories upon request, a plastics ban, and also reuse for onsite. And when you look up the demographics of the restaurants in your two, what could be sister cities are really similar. So that being said, I am in support. I would love to see a change in the language of practicable, because I feel like it's a really confusing word. I had to look it up, and maybe just to include some additional exemptions for restaurants who might have limited square footage or additional hardships. So I urge you to pass it. I applaud you for the work you're doing, and I ask you for potentially a slight amendment to the wording of the reuse onsite. And thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comments. It looks like we have another one, a hand raised, Sally Lu, who might have had technical difficulties earlier when her hand first raised. So I will, I will call on her now.
Thank you, Leilani. Good evening, Madam Mayor and City Councilmembers. I'm a member of Reusable San Mateo County, which Leilani referenced. We are a coalition of community members and organizations working to reduce plastic pollution in our county to safeguard our health, communities, and environment. And we are so supportive of the proposed disposable foodware ordinance. And in particular, like others have said, we are very grateful to city staff for engaging with us and supporting the reusable foodware requirement when dining in restaurants. Reusable San Mateo County performed a detailed analysis of the cost and waste impacts of the proposed ordinance on over 200 Daly City restaurants, and we shared our analyses and our written comments to you, Madam Mayor, and the city council members. We cannot overemphasize how important the dine-in reusable foodware requirement is and how it will help our restaurants, especially during COVID recovery, because it really truly saves them money. Our analysis showed that restaurants will save on average $5,000 each year. So the $300 cost that might happen would be recouped very quickly in a couple months, whether they had to pay for new plates or dishwasher or whatever. So the whole entire restaurant sector, we're talking about 300, or excuse me, $680,000 each year that they would save. I mean, that's just unbelievable. On the waste side, we're talking about over 23 million disposable items that are being saved from being thrown away after single use. That's 400,000 pounds of waste that's going to be stopped going to our landfill. So it's so important this reusable foodware dine-in requirement be added, because we do recognize, you know, going from single-use plastic to compostable takeout containers will have some cost increase. But despite that cost increase, the total benefit to our restaurant sector is $240,000. Thank you.
Thank you, Sally. And lastly, we have Daisy Fong.
Hi, my name is Daisy Fong, and I'm a resident in Pacifica and a volunteer for the reusable SMC. As your nearest neighbor, I also visit Daly City often to eat at your many great restaurants and shop at your local businesses. I am concerned with the amount of plastic waste generated by single-use plastics at increase and takeout. I see it on the beaches and overflowing trash cans on the side of the streets. I support the SMC foodware ordinance with the addition of the reusable food service wear requirement, as this will further reduce the amount of disposable waste. I was part of team that performed the analysis of the Daly City restaurants, and based on our assessment, we found that 50% of restaurants are ready, usable for dine-in. We're talking about your Joseph Westlake, your Boulevard Cafe, your Chiba, and many taquerias. So for those eateries, there will be little impact to their operations. I urge City Council to pass the proposed foodware ordinance recommended by city staff. I want to thank the mayor and members of the council for taking action on this important initiative.
Thank you for your comments. That concludes public comment.
Thank you so much for all of those that have provided a public comment in regards to this item. Thank you for taking your time out this evening. I want to thank Ms. Leilani Ramos for the comprehensive presentation and all your hard work in regards to this, and also for all the advocates that have worked closely with you to bring this forth together. So thank you for your time. You know, I think it's definitely a no-brainer in regards to the direction we need to move in sustainability and really being able to step up in regards to finding ways in which, as I mentioned earlier, to have less litter that is, that can't be decomposed right by, you know, our shorelines, right? And so, you know, I moved to approve this, but with one caveat in mind is if there are any small businesses that need the support and cannot even cover the amount that was mentioned, that there's some way we can support them in this endeavor. I think this is in relation to what we just covered earlier today, right? We are in a pandemic, and people are trying to recover and come back into ensuring that their viability as a business remains. And so I moved to approve this, but with that one caveat that if there are any businesses that we provide an opportunity for them, if they do have any hardships in any way, if that we can support them around the mechanism that we have within our recovery dollars or to that extent, that's just at the top of mind. But wonderful work. I think, you know, we need to do this for now, for the future, for the children, like our children's children, and just for our community and our environment, that's all interconnected. Oh, Councilmember Benaventura.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. First, I want to second your motion to approve this item. I'm fully in support of it and your additional addendum to it. I do have a question before we vote, and that is to Ms. Ramos. I was wondering, actually, what, and I'm just curious, because I'd like to know what the opposition argument is. I always want to be fair, and I want to be understanding of what their viewpoint is. And so what, in general, would you say is the industry, the restaurant industry in particular, of their acceptance of this is really where we need to be, and this is the direction we really need to go? Has there been much in terms of an opposition to these kind of policies and resolutions? Or are the restaurants basically falling in line and agreeing that, you know, sustainability and the environment is really something we need to keep an eye on for our future?
From the feedback we've received, there's general overall support for it, with the exceptions of the concerns of the financial impact it could have. And we've already seen, since we've started to do outreach in fall of 2019, that some of our Daly City restaurants have already moved to fiber base in anticipation of this new ordinance. And with staff's recommendation to have the effective October 1st of 2022, it allows additional time for them to become in compliance. One of the feedback I had received was, you know, a food facility had just purchased a bunch of compostable plastic containers, and they were concerned that that would end up being a loss because of the new ordinance that would be adopted. So there will be sufficient time for them to use stock that they have, and then to start transitioning to fiber-based. and then to start transitioning to fiber-based.
Thank you, Ms. Ramos.
Thank you.
So I second the motion again.
Thank you very much. There's a second on the floor, and at this point, do we have a roll call on this?
Just for procedural purposes, this is an ordinance. So the motion is just a first reading for the city attorney to read by title only. It's not the adoption of the ordinance.
Okay, motion for a city attorney to read by title only, please.
Second.
A voice vote for the motion.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Thank you. This is an ordinance of the city of Daly City repealing and replacing Chapter 8.64 of the Daly City Municipal Code regulating the use of disposable food serviceware by food facilities. And we will entertain an introduction of the ordinance.
Thank you very much, Council. I mean, thank you very much to my colleagues on council, Attorney Zimmerman. I just want to be very clear that I'd like to introduce this ordinance, but I want to make sure that what I mentioned earlier, if there's any hardships in regards to any businesses that arise, that we'd be able to accommodate those that have hardships, and it will be delineated within the ordinance.
Attorney Zimmerman, I miss me, we could work on language to include that for the second reading.
Great. Okay, wonderful. Thank you. Great job. We have a lot of business done today as we continue. So thank you so much. I, you know, I think that there's so many ordinances and policies, and this is one that really looks out for our environment. So thank you for all your hard work on this. And so now we're moving on item number 15, the TAFRA hearing, tax exempt financing for Brunswick Street Apartments. And this evening, we have Ms. Sobel. Thank you so much. Hello, Betsy.
Good evening, Mayor and members of the City Council. The Brunswick Senior Apartments is a 206-unit senior apartment complex that was developed by Pacific West Communities in 2016 and 17. All of the units in the project are reserved for lower income, or seniors of, seniors of lower income. Pacific West Communities has used tax-exempt bond financing to develop and is working with, to develop the project, and is working with the California Statewide Communities Development Authority as the municipal issuer of the bonds in an aggregate amount of $80 million. Now the construction of the project is completed, the bonds must be converted from a construction loan to a permanent loan with a loan closing by September 1. For all or a portion of the bonds to continue qualifying as tax-exempt, the city must conduct a public hearing, providing members of the community an opportunity to speak in favor of or against the use of tax-exempt financing for the project. Following the hearing, the council must provide its approval of the issuance of the bonds for the financing of the project. The bonds to be issued by the authority for the project will be the sole responsibility of the developer, and the city will have no financial, legal, or moral obligation for the project or the repayment of the bonds. The city will in no way become exposed to any financial liability by reason of its membership in the authority. In addition, participation by the city in the authority will not impact the city's appropriations limits and will not constitute any type of indebtedness by the city. Outside of holding the hearing and adopting the required resolution, no other participation or activity of the city or the City Council with respect to the issuance of the bonds will be required. Staff recommends that the city conduct the hearing and adopt the resolution in favor of the reissuance of the bonds by the authority for the purpose of the Brunswick Senior Apartments. And with that, I'm available, along with staff from the developer and the California Municipal Finance Authority, to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you very much, Ms. Sobel, on that. Are there any questions for my colleagues at this time in regards to the TAFRA hearing, that's tax exempt financing, in regards to the Brunswick Senior Apartments? I see no hands raised at this time. So at this moment, I will open the hearing. Ms. Leilani, if you can check to see if there's anyone that will raise their hand for this item. Thank you.
For those members of the public who wish to comment on item number 15, please click the raise hand feature to speak on this agenda item. For those joining by phone, press star nine to raise your hand. No raised hands, Mayor.
Thank you very much, Ms. Ramos. May I have a motion to close the hearing?
Motion to close the hearing?
I have a first, I have a second.
Second.
Second for Vice Mayor. Thank you very much. All in favor, say aye.
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 Thank you. So I see no questions from my colleagues at this time. So I entertain a motion to adopt the resolution by roll call.
Mr. Buena Ventura?
Aye.
Dr. Rod?
Aye.
Ms. D. Giovanni?
Aye.
Mr. Sylvester?
Glenn Sylvester, aye.
Ms. Manalo?
Aye, thank you very much. Unanimously passed, thank you to all my colleagues. I know how much each and every one of you value having more affordable housing in our communities, and this is continuity of being able to do so. So thank you so much, Ms. Sobel, for your continued hard work on this. And thank you for this time this evening. Now moving on to item number 16, communications. The designation of 2021 voting delegate and alternates for the League of Cities, California Cities Annual Business Meeting. And we have Miss Maltby.
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. Good evening. So this is city business. It's not as exciting as the previous items, but nonetheless, it's important, and it does require your adoption. So, as you know, the League of California Cities has an annual conference that's scheduled for September 22nd through the 24th of this year. A very important part of that annual conference is the annual business meeting, which is on 12, at 12:30 on Friday, September 24th. To participate as an official voting member of the league at this business meeting, the city of Daly City must designate a voting delegate and up to two alternates to officially cast ballots on resolutions that may be considered at the business meeting, and those establish the policy. So it's recommended that the council select and designate a voting delegate and up to two alternates to participate in this meeting.
Thank you, Ms. Maltby.
At this time, I would make a motion to have Mayor Manalo as one of the delegates.
My second.
We can't hear you.
Thank you very much. So we have a first and second, and this is for the voting delegate. And then I guess we do it separately. Okay, so at this moment, may, do we have a roll call on this? Yeah, we have a roll call. Do you have a roll call, please?
Mr. Buena Ventura?
Aye.
Dr. Rod?
Aye.
Ms. D. Giovanni?
Aye.
Mr. Sylvester?
Glenn Sylvester, aye.
Ms. Manalo?
Aye, thank you very much. And at this point, we will need two, is it two alternates, Ms. Maltby? Two alternates for the League of Cities. Who's, who will be in attendance? Is there? I believe all are in attendance.
Yes.
Oh, okay, wonderful. At this time, I'd like to nominate as alternates Vice Mayor Das Magual and alternate Councilmember Benaventura.
Second.
Okay, thank you very much. I have a second, and may we have a roll call, please?
Mr. Buena Ventura?
Aye.
Dr. Rod?
Aye.
Ms. D. Giovanni?
Aye.
Mr. Sylvester?
Glenn Sylvester, aye.
Ms. Manalo?
Aye, thank you very much. Okay, thank you, Ms. Maltby. All right, we got lots of business done this evening, and now we are at our last item, item number 17. And look, we're at nine o'clock, we're doing good. So at this point, item number 17, it's requesting reconsideration of the zone change ZZ-4-21-15008, rezone 1618 Sullivan Avenue to be included with the CC Commercial Cannabis Combining District. And so I know we have Mr. Baniluk Husin, who will be providing us with more information. But before we move on, I'd like to have some comments in regards to this item number 17. On June 28th, I was feeling ill, and it is quite disappointing that two of my colleagues, Councilmember D. Giovanni and Councilmember Sylvester, could not, or actually would not wait for me to join the next meeting with something as large as an ordinance aforementioned this evening. And it was not even time pressing, and they could not wait for the next council meeting. I was shocked when I watched the meeting, and there was a lack of consideration when it was raised to postpone the decision when I was not present. If I were in your shoes, I would afford you that courtesy. Let me be clear, it was indeed a rarity that I missed council meetings, and can attest that in the past five and a half years on this council, I have always tried to make it, but I was feeling ill. I hope this does not start a precedent, and that just because this is convenient for you politically, you are not willing to be considerate to a colleague to have a voice on an issue by postponing the vote when it wasn't even time pressured. I just was extremely shocked, and I hope this doesn't stay as a precedent, precedent moving forward, because quite honestly, I would afford my colleagues that opportunity if you were feeling ill that day and could have postponed it to another meeting. I just wanted to share with you my thoughts in regards to this, and I see it's up for reconsideration at this time. Mr. Baniluk Husin, thank you very much.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I have a very brief presentation for you. I think everybody sort of knows the story here. On June 28th, a request to rezone a property at 1618 Sullivan Avenue came before the council. The rezoning would have allowed that property to join the commercial cannabis overlay zone and have potential retail sales of cannabis located on the site. Of course, there's a lottery process that's involved, but it would have been allowed to have joined that process. On a two-two vote, the City Council declined the request, and so that kind of ended that segment of story, so to speak. The applicant is under Robert's Rules of Order, allowed to request a reconsideration of the denial. And Mr. T. Aldy, the applicant, did submit that request in a timely manner. It was an attachment to the staff report, the request was. And the City Council has for them on tonight's agenda, therefore, a decision to make, and the dissenting voters, which were Councilmember D. Giovanni and Councilmember Sylvester, do need to, Rose can correct me if I'm wrong, introduce the concept of a reconsideration. It has to be one of those two dissenting voters on that item. So with that, I will leave the rest. I don't know if Rose has anything to add to what I said.
I do, thank you, Michael. This is just for procedural purposes, as well as establishing the record. The record does reflect in the motion in the minutes of the city clerk that it is under Robert's Rules of Order that the prevailing party, which is the party that the members of the council that defeated the motion, record does reflect that it's Councilmember Sylvester and Councilmember D. Giovanni. Those two council members are the members that would have to make a motion for reconsideration if that motion is made and therefore voted by the council. The item that, as presented by the applicant, Mr. T. Aldy, will be placed on the next regularly scheduled meeting, which at this time will be in September. So we just wanted to clarify that as the records in the minutes of the city clerk, who can make the motion for reconsideration on this item this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ivan Lukosin, and thank you, Attorney Zimmerman, for that clarification in regards to this matter. I do see a hand up from my colleague, Councilmember Benaventura. Do you have any questions?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. So I cannot express any more clear than what you have mentioned on how disappointed I was that the courtesies were not extended to give you some time to participate in that meeting. It has always been my hope that on each and every issue that comes before the council, that everyone, everyone can be accommodated and everyone can actually vote. Equally as important is that everyone be allowed to participate in the discussion, regardless if you disagree with the position of another council member. Now, we've all had our disagreements at times, but the bottom line is, we were all allowed to vote. I mean, even last year, when Councilmember D. Giovanni wanted to even change her vote on the tenant emergency ordinance, we let her. I let her, because I was the mayor at the time. So no one, no one has ever been denied the opportunity to vote, and that's what happened. Now, I would like to think that it wasn't political gamesmanship, so that there wouldn't be the three people over two people. I don't know what it was, but it certainly, there was no reason why it couldn't be postponed. There was no pressing issue why it could not have been heard tonight. The tradition of this council has been to continue matters when there's been a request, and certainly when there's no harm in continuing it. That tradition was broken last time. And I'm afraid that it has set a precedent that will be bad for everyone tomorrow. This could happen to you. You could be, for whatever reason, ill yourself, unable to attend. Whatever the reasons are, I would think you would want to know that your colleagues will give you a chance so that you can be present and respect that you have a right to vote, rather than putting it off and brushing it over, but let's just do it now, so we can exclude someone from voting. Because that's the net effect that happened. I think we are better than that, despite our disagreements. And so let's have the democratic process play itself out. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Benaventura. Are there any other comments or questions for my colleagues at this time? Are there any other comments or questions for my colleagues at this time? Vice Mayor Das Magual.
I concur with my colleague, Councilmember Benaventura. There has always been a theme of inclusivity and equalness, and I just want to honor that, you know, in terms of the democratic process. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. At this point, are there any comments or questions for my colleagues at this time? And I think Attorney Zimmerman, you mentioned what the process is, if there were to be any.
That's correct, Madam Mayor. As a chair, assuming that there aren't any additional comments, you may request if there is any motion for the reconsideration of this item. At your pleasure, Madam Mayor.
Thank you very much, Attorney Zimmerman. I've heard from a couple of my colleagues this evening. I'm providing the opportunity for my other two colleagues, if they have any questions or comments, this one last time. And I'll look at the screen to see if there's any raised hands. And if not, I will ask for, entertain a motion from those that via Roberts Rules have the ability to do so. So first and foremost, are there any other comments from my other colleagues? I'm seeing no hands raised at this time. And so, and now moving into the process. I am now asking the colleagues that I think via process is, I think they're the only two that had dissent in regards to this item that would be able to put this on the agenda. And so at this time, entertain a motion from either Councilmember Pam Di Giovanni or Councilmember Glenn Sylvester, per Roberts Rules. I see no hands raised. I mean, I see no hands raised. I see no one unmuting at this time. Just trying to be very clear, is that, is there no motion from Councilmember Di Giovanni and Councilmember Glenn Sylvester? Okay. Ms. Zimmerman, can you please proceed with procedurally what happens at this juncture?
So at this time, since there is no motion from the prevailing parties on the motion for consideration, there is no motion that can proceed at this time. Motion fails.
Thank you very much, Ms. Zimmerman. I will say one comment, not necessarily on this item, but in regards to being able to have an opportunity to speak on this and being able, as mentioned, it could have been a different item, not this item on the floor. It's quite unfortunate that my colleagues can't see beyond and being able to provide me an opportunity to have a voice on this, regardless if this wasn't the issue or not, because I was ill at the previous meeting. This is quite an unfortunate situation, seeing that here play out. I just wanted to share that with each and every one of you. Because if it was quite reversed, I would afford them the opportunity to have a voice. For those parties involved, thank you for this time this evening. We will be, and thank you for staff and everyone on this item. We will now be moving on to our public comment. Thank you, each and every one of you, for item number seventeen.
In accordance with the Brown Act laws governing regular meetings, the city council is not authorized to speak to or take action on any other items in this meeting. Members of the public who wish their comment may click the raise hand feature to raise your hand to speak. For those joining by phone, press star nine to raise your hand and star six to unmute. It is important to note that staff will announce the name of the last person whose hand was raised upon calling for public comment, and that person will be the last verbal comment. If any additional speakers queue up after the last called speaker, the mayor may continue to allow public comment if time allows. Otherwise, public comment may be emailed to cityclerk@dailycity.org to be added to the record and shared with the city council. When you hear your name called, staff will send you a request to unmute your microphone, and you may begin speaking. Each person will receive a maximum of two minutes to speak and may only speak once. When your two minutes have been reached, we ask that you wrap up your comments. Speakers on compliance with the council's rules of decorum will be muted.
We have one hand raised. Helen Nicely.
Thank you. Again, good evening, Madam Mayor and city council members. Can you hear me?
Yes, Ms. Nicely, we can hear you.
Great, thank you. So this is a different issue. It's regarding the Thornton Beach Bluff, where there is a proposed building on the agenda, and I've lived in coastal San Mateo for over seventeen years and have witnessed the building of seismically unstable land with disastrous results. The Thornton Beach Bluff is the most unstable area to build up on. I've walked there recently and witnessed small landslides caused just by my walking there. Therefore, I'm concerned that there is intent to recommend a mitigated negative declaration, which is apparently a significantly reduced measure when it really needs to have an environmental negative declaration. And I urge everyone to really think about this and also think about the disasters that have happened on the coast. And I'm sure you know all about them, and I see them every time I drive around Pacifica and up at Avalon Canyon, there's the car park of the Presbyterian Church, for example. I mean, is there no one that's going to stand up for the sense of this, this situation? And its effects that it's going to have, and it could in fact affect people that own buildings here. We, you know, as property owners, we have to pay for this in our taxes if there is a disaster that happens. And so I'm worried about a lot of different issues from this, but that's the one I wanted to bring up. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comments. That concludes public comment. Thank you for all those that provided a public comment this evening. We appreciate you taking the time out in this late evening to share your thoughts and your insight. It is greatly appreciated. Now we are moving on to appointments of boards and commission membership, committee appointments at this time. I am asking if there are any nominations at this point this evening. Seeing no hands raised, we will be moving on to council committee reports. Are there any council committee reports at this time? Seeing no hands raised, we will be moving on to city council reports. Are there any city council reports at this time? Councilmember Sylvester.
Thank you very much, Mayor. I want to take the opportunity at this time to congratulate Daly City residents, the parents, Mr. Mark and Bea Sagum. Just a couple of days ago, their daughter, again, a Daly City resident by the name of Dominique Sagum, obtained and qualified and won Faleo, which is a Filipino-American law enforcement officer's scholarship award in honor of Officer Nick Burko, who made the ultimate sacrifice. I met the family at the beginning, at the onset of the pandemic, to which they were part of a group called NorCal Kababayan. And not only have we become friends, but I've definitely become a client and a customer. And I have to give them kudos because during the pandemic, they worked so hard to make ends meet. And having a daughter, a promising scholar, who takes care of her three brothers and sisters, was definitely an award scholarship winner, mostly, most deserved. She attends Skyline College. And I just wanted to make mention that, again, a Daly City resident, I wish her the best of luck. Her parents should be very proud of her, and she wants to enter the field of psychology. And given the events and the current status of issues affecting us today, the need for a mental health professional, not only for victims and citizens, but she definitely saw that law enforcement can use those services as well. So I wish to congratulate Dominic Sagum of Daly City for the Faleo Scholarship Award. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Sylvester. You know, I want to share with everyone that something that happened just last Friday. I mean, our community hospital is finally getting its seismic done. And so I think for many of you watching, you know, Seton Hospital has been integral to your lives. And, you know, Vice Mayor, I know one of your kids were born there. And so, you know, having that step happen is huge. And it's definitely such a collaborative effort in regards to ensuring this step happens. I know, you know, we sent a letter to Assemblymember Phil Ting's office to extend the timing for the retrofit. And it's been a collaborative effort in ensuring for decades that this hospital remains. And so it's hopeful to see that happen, but we know there's a lot of work ahead. We know that it's really also the pulse and beat of the workers that have put in so much, even prior to pandemic, throughout the pandemic, and even now. And so I just wanted to share that with community members that may not know that, you know, they have hired on Swinerton that will be doing the seismic. And we hope to see that. We know that that's reinforcing the foundation for the physical part of the building. But we know that the foundation of Seton Hospital is the workers, the patients, and every community member that has continued to advocate for our community hospital. Just know that you have an advocate and continued supporter in regards to that. You know, last year, you know, worked diligently with Supervisor Canapa's office and Assemblymember Phil Ting, as well as, we know, Senator Scott Wiener was in support of this. And so it's always going to be on our eye, and we're going to continue to always ensure that we are not skipping a beat in towards our community hospital on the hill. So that just happened recently, and also I think in the last meeting, we mentioned how I attended the Basca Board Meeting. I know, all of you know that it's quite important for us to make sure that we are conserving water. I've said it before, where our residents here in Daly City have been amazing in conserving water. It's kind of just a part of our being, and we've seen that through just our statistics along the way. But we have to continue doing our part, as we all know, with the drought. So first and foremost, thank you for what you're doing to conserve water. We just need to be a little bit more mindful in regards to that as what's happening. So thank you so much. And I think, I think that's it for my city council report. And now I will hand it over to Councilmember Di Giovanni.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just want to reiterate the same thing, that the seismic retrofit that we, that we, that those of us that attended, Mayor Manalo attended, was, it's a step forward. But yet we still need to remember that now we have another surge, per se, in our nurses and are understaffed at Seton, and our nurses and the NUHW healthcare workers as well. So yes, retrofitting is happening, and thanks to a bill from Assemblymember Phil Ting and Senator Scott Wiener, it was fourteen eighty-two, they gave an extension for this to be happening. Congresswoman Spear, Supervisor Canapa was there, and many members of our community. But I wanted to let people know that we're going to fight to keep the doors open, and the nurses, we're going to fight for that too. So it has to be all unions. It's great that we're having building unions, but we need to recognize that all of our union brothers and sisters and the workers there, the nurses, the healthcare workers, also it's safely understaffed and try to address that issue as we continue to move forward. And had several meetings on that particular issue, and hope I had big listening ears, and we'll be following up and giving your reports on it. So thank you very much, and retrofitting has begun. So got to keep those doors open. Thank you very much, Madam Mayor.
We have Vice Mayor Das Magual.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to report that I had the honor to be part of a delegation with San Francisco Supervisor Matt Haney, Pastor Theon Johnson III from Oakland, Raquel Redondes from Malaya Movement, and one of my good friends, Brandon Lee, who was a survivor of assassination attempt in the Cordilleras region in the Philippines. I participated in this protest at the Philippine consulate concerning the State of the Union address of the Duterte regime in the Philippines. And as part of this delegation, we're talking to the different deputy general, deputy representatives about the reports of following up on the investigation for my friend Brandon Lee, who's a Chinese-American land protector that was, that was shot two years ago. And now he is paralyzed from the chest down for protecting indigenous peoples in the Cordilleras region in the Philippines. I just want to put this out there in terms of the dangers of extradition killings, the drug war that's happening in the Philippines, that has extended to this legislation called anti-terror legislation, where the language is so vague that if people go out there and protest, or even or even discuss imperialism or anything against the Filipino government, they can be red-tagged and be an enemy of, of the state. That puts myself as an educator, students of mine, at risk. So I just wanted to put it out there that despite, it's still continuing. And, you know, justice for my good friend Brandon Lee. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Das Mokwal. I see no other hands raised in regards to this item, city council reports. Now moving on to any staff reports from... Well, one thing I do want to mention, I think, is really important before we move on. And Madam City Clerk, if you could add this on to my city council report. You know, I think although we're in COVID right now, COVID and recovery, and we're looking for ways in which we could continue to support our small businesses, our residents, I think we also have an opportunity to be innovative. As mentioned earlier, you know, there have been a lot of families and individuals that have been innovative and trying to offset their, you know, resources by cooking at home. And we saw so many people do that in cooking at home. And now with, you know, the Meiko program from San Mateo had started about two years ago, when it was a pilot program. But, you know, I think it's important if we were able to see how we can support and create something here in regards to Daily City that can support the residents that are, that may need information around being able to utilize that program. I think maybe we might have an opportunity to find an incubator site. And maybe once, if they're, you know, having home-cooked businesses in their homes, you never know what might emerge if they even have a large following and might need a commercial-sized incubator kitchen. You know, these are ideas that are not far-fetched. There are organizations like La Cucina in San Francisco that have built these models. And because we are a large community filled with immigrants and diverse communities with so much amazing food, I will say, I think it may be an opportunity to tap into what we already have and be able to become an emergent and, you know, be in a place of like where we have amazing food, but also be able to just grow that, right? So I'd like to see if staff is able to see if there's any way we can find opportunities. I don't know if it's partnering with the North San Mateo. I think, is it the Entrepreneur Center? I don't know what they're calling it now, but they're supposed to be serving Daily City, South San Francisco, San Bruno, Brisbane. But tapping into ensuring that our Daily City businesses and residents have access to those resources, especially nowadays. And so I know, Ms. Maltby, you do an amazing job with your staff and really being able to look at ways to, to see what's possible, feasible, realistic. But it's something that I think would really be able to benefit those community members on the ground and also be able to just also help us as a city, right? So I think it's a win-win, something to look into. I don't know if Moonstar has been leased out. That's a large commercial kitchen that I don't even know is being leased. But I know that there are many culinary home-based, work, home-based cooks that I can foresee in the future, they might outgrow their, the $50,000 threshold. And that's not a bad thing. That means that they've become, they've moved to the next level as far as a business owner. So that's just some food for thought. No pun intended. But I just wanted to share that with each and every one of you before I forget. So, so thank you. And now I'll hand it off to you, Ms. Maltby.
Thank you. I have nothing to report tonight. However, in response to your comments, Madam Mayor, Stephen and I, the city manager and I, were just talking earlier about the new business center that is housed in South San Francisco and reaching out to them. So I know currently there are some limitations within our muni code regarding city property. And it's certainly something that staff is looking into to try to help some of these very small businesses that take place in people's homes as far as cooking in homes. So appreciate the feedback. And staff will definitely be following up with that. But nothing else for me to report. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Ms. Maltby and your entire staff. You know, it has been quite a year. And each and every one of you have continued to work steadfast amongst so many levels of where we have to pivot. You know, I know that we're foreseeing September, but we might not be in chambers in September. And so being able to pivot and make sure we listen to the science that is in front of us and also look at mechanisms to continue to communicate to our residents has been huge. So I want to thank your whole staff and team and the entire city of Daily City family for continuing with just their love to serve Daily City. I saw that on, I definitely saw that with the opening of Geller Park. That was beautiful. Every single department that was involved, Ms. Leilani Ramos, thank you for your hard, hard dedication and work towards that. You can really tell what the Daily City family, you know, cares about and how united everyone is as far as staff. And so I just want to say thank you. It was the first event, I know. We'll see what comes down the pipeline. But, you know, Director Chu, I know you were able to be there, but your staff was. Thank you so much for all that hard work. I heard that, you know, a lot of it was in-house. And so that means that you led that team. And so being able to lead that team and be able to have cost savings. And for those of you watching, I'm talking about the Geller Park renovation celebration. A lot of that work was done in-house with the leadership of Director Chu and many others that put their heart into this. And we know that it's, it's been a central place for young, old, and older adults in between as far as recreation and just being able to have, you know, a healthy, safe place to breathe and run and play and celebrate with family and friends. So big, big kudos to each and every one of you on that. And I can say that was probably one of the times where you were able to, you know, have that in-person community feel for quite a while. So Director Chu, thank you so much. It's looking great out there. And I know a lot of our community members are happy with the tennis courts, the basketball courts that are, thank you so much for letting us know when that's done. Everyone was so excited. Well, so when can we play basketball? I know the tennis players were just super joyous about it. And I know that the basketball courts are up and running and everything in that regard. So I didn't want to forget, as we moved into our next meeting, to say a big thank you to each and every one of you that put a lot of time into this. And that is the Daily City team spirit. So thank you. And so now we are moving on to, okay, Council, Councilmember DG Lani, you have additions to your city council report?
Yeah, thank you very much. Yeah, just a short one. I just want to echo like what you said. It was a beautiful day. And, and thank you so much, Mr. Chu, Director Chu, and all the engineers, recreation, wastewater. Piccolotti was out there, everyone, and Denise. I mean, I just, incredible. And the community, thank you to the community. And it was so great to see Mr. Chu that wheelchair swing. Yay! I remember when we had a discussion about that, and I brought it up about David as well, Canapa. And then you were really supportive as well. I want to thank you because you really changed a life. I know someone that's already used it, a child. And even though they can't communicate, the mother wanted me to send her gratitude because it's the first time in Daily City. Her child is now, I think, just turned six and was able to get on a swing. And it was, she said, unbelievable. So that, tell your staff, your engineers, surely everybody, that, that recreation, all of you. Shawna, Leilani, Stephen, that in itself, I didn't get a chance to tell you, Ms. Zimmerman or whoever, that that really made a difference in a child's life. So now inclusiveness. So thank you very much. Thank you, Madam Mayor. Appreciate it. Beautiful day. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Okay, I think we are now done with our city council reports. I know sometimes they're all on our list. And so now we will be moving on to adjourning in our, in memoriam. And Councilmember Bonaventura.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'd like us to adjourn in memory of Miles Shigeru Honda. Miles Honda was the father to Darrell Honda. Darrell Honda is a really good friend of mine, a really good community kind of guy. Very generous with his time and treasure. He's very supportive of all community efforts. Even though he's from San Francisco, he's the president of the San Francisco Board of Appeals. And he has been someone that has, I would say willingly, givingly, and with a lot of courage, has shared the struggle that he had with his father, basically hospicing him at home and showing the community what it's like and how to take care of your parents or your parent during their last few days. And so I applaud Darrell for that, for the courage that he had and for taking care of his father to his dying day. So I'd like us to adjourn in memory of Mr. Honda. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Bonaventura. We send our deepest condolences to Commissioner Honda in San Francisco. I'd also like to adjourn in memory and to a resident. It is Miguel Guerrero's grandmother, who is a resident here in Daily City. Florence Kalalang passed away peacefully in the presence of her family on Wednesday, June 30th, 2021, at the age of 92. Born the youngest of nine children in Manila, she became a pharmacist after obtaining her degree from the University of Santo Tomas after marrying the love of her life, Dr. Onisimo Kalalang. She built her own pharmacy practice in the Philippines. On April 15, 1980, she followed Onisimo and her children and immigrated to the United States. After a brief stint in Los Angeles, they moved to San Francisco, where they lived in South Market neighborhood. Even after the untimely death of her husband, Florence was a devoted housewife and continued to be in the lives of her children once they started their own families. In 1992, she moved to Daily City to live with her eldest daughter and her husband, where she would spend the rest of her life. She will forever be remembered as a strong woman of faith who prayed daily for the needs of her children, grandchildren, and loved ones, both spoken and unspoken. She also enjoyed crocking and cooking for her family, both of which she loved to do as a matron of the Kalalang family. Even as her health issues rendered her less mobile in her later years, she charmed everyone she met with an infectious smile and her love of snacks. Living up to the ripe age of 92 allowed her to be witness to countless family milestones from birthdays, graduations, marriages, and even the birth of her great-grandchild. She is survived by her three children and six grandchildren, along with many family members and loved ones that will miss her dearly. And now may we all have a moment of silence. Thank you so much. Take care, everyone.